I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Carl, could you lead us in the pledge today?
Absolutely. I pledge no allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into your republic, official standing, in recognition, under God, in the business law, and in the protection of our citizens.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to reviewing the meeting minutes from the September 1st Board of Education meeting. Any comments or questions on that? I'm seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on then to our first public commentary, and this is for agenda items only. Any public commentary on the first agenda items? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our items from the superintendent, and it looks like you have two items for us tonight, Carl.
I do, sorry. The first item was brought up at the last meeting and... Sorry, the first item I had this evening was brought up at the last meeting we had, and it was in regards to a proposed sidewalk that the township has brought to our attention. And so, the ideal is that the township would like to use some of their, I think their ARP funds to create a sidewalk. This is the only one I believe right now that affected the district. This would be a sidewalk, a new sidewalk that would go just from the south side of the Junior, or I'm sorry, Jackman Road Elementary parking lot and entry, on the right-hand side of the yellow highlighted line, and it would go through JRE. It will go, keep, continue down the road. And I think this is actually an older view that I was given, but the new proposal is to take the sidewalk straight across Jackman Road with a walkway here across Dean, and then have a walkway going to the high school, and then would pick up again, and which would lead to our walkway system at the high school and the junior high. So, the ideal is that students or community members could walk essentially from Jackman Road to the neighborhood, right next door, all the way through to the library, including the junior high and high school. This proposal would not cost the district funds. I think, it has not been board approved by the township yet. I think they have discussed it, and their federal grant fund committee has proposed it to us. I'm not asking for any votes or anything this week. I'd like to be able to have a discussion, and if the board is in favor, at least at this moment, I could give them a thumbs up that they should continue with the planning for it. I think it's a good idea personally. We've looked at other grants at the community level to try to get sidewalks through all of our elementaries connecting to the neighborhoods. This would be a start, it would not come out of district funds. The biggest, the biggest issue I would be concerned about, but I'm not really that concerned about it, is that we would lose two parking spots, the very two furthest parking spots down here at the end. This is visitor and some staff parking, just because that's where the sidewalk would go, because there are limits on how close a sidewalk can be to the road. But they would just put a walkway across that with paint, and kind of like a walkway across the road. So, they do plan on putting lights at the necessary intersections to make sure that there are crossing lines there, or crossing lights there. And this is hopefully the start of potentially adding additional sidewalks to the community using grant and either state or local grant funds. Any thoughts or questions?
Carl, just on the slide four, I'm just trying to orient here.
Sorry. Yes.
Where this ends, so this is showing that it's ending.
It actually would end into the furthest south drive, the drive up. It's not going to carry past the first entry drive, it would stop. So, if you look at right here, this is the, this is the high school park, this is the high school lot, this is the new sign right here. So, the new design, I believe, would carry across to right here, cross, and then continue on, and it would stop right there at the walk, at the driveway. So, individual walking or group walking would walk to, they'd get, they'd get across, it would link right to our drive, and then they would take our drive up to near the school where the sidewalk continued again.
Over to...
Over to the junior high, or the library. You know, if you remember, a few years ago, we, I think it was my first year, six years ago, we did partner with the township on, and some of our local trade unions to create that sidewalk between the junior high and, and the library, so.
Through.
Huh?
Through.
Yeah, so this would be an option for us to continue that.
Okay, thank you. Any other additional questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
So, am I good to let them know that we've just, we've talked about it? We're in favor of it, there's no approval needed until, until they've, their board has voted on it, discussed it, but they didn't want to take it to their board until our board was at least in favor. So, essentially, we'd be granting an easement to, to just have this on, the sidewalk. Tom, you have any issues with it?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay.
Who would be responsible for snow removal?
Property owners, the district. We did purchase some new snow blowers a couple of years ago, so. It's not going to snow anymore, so it's fine. It would be, I imagine, whoever is in front of it, so.
They'll be around while they're in the building.
Jackman Road staff will take care of Jackman Road in front of their building. The, the high school staff, secondary staff will take care of it there. If it goes in front of other people's property, they'll, they'll have to take care of it. I don't think the township is planning to hire other maintenance or workers to do that. So, I imagine, we haven't discussed it, but I imagine that would be the most common practice. And I think we're prepared to do that, is that correct, Tom?
Well...
Tom said yes, we're fine.
It's worth the discussion, yes.
It, it may not be, if we find that it's being used, I mean, obviously, our primary lots and our walkways up to the building are going to be primary, but if we find that we are getting additional walking traffic to the secondary business, or buildings, then I think we'll have to look at a, you know, plan for that. But, right now, I think the idea is to have it just as a connector, so.
I mean, the only private property I see is the apartment building.
There's the apartment building, and then before that, yes, there's the township hall.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we would do, we would, I would, I would propose that we just in front of our property.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying we should shovel the whole thing, but it'd be a shame if the apartment complex or whoever else doesn't shovel it.
I'm sure our community would note or post that if they had an issue with it.
I guess the only other issue I have with it is it doesn't take off the Verizon sign in front of the high school.
I did inquire about that, unfortunately, well before my arrival, there was an easement granted for that, I don't know who owns it, I thought it was a Frontier box, honestly. The box that's adjacent to where the current new sign is. It's an eyesore, it's not ours. Are we, I'd like to paint it minimal, but yeah, if they, if they had to move that somewhere, that would be a shame.
Can we do the sidewalk, so it goes like a little...
Right through, right through it, eminent domain? Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I will talk to them about it, but yes, that's, that, that box has been a, ever since we bought our new signs and had to move it over because of that, it's, it is an eyesore, but I am in favor of the plan as it currently is stated. And hopefully, they can find additional funds to apply for and connect some of our other buildings. I know at one point, they were talking about connecting Monroe Road Elementary to the downtown development district using, using the Bedford BDA. I mean, that would be, I mean, again, I think, we've seen tragedy in this community with, with our kids walking, I don't want to see that again. Thank you, I will let them know.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, the CTE potential partnership.
Yes, so, for several years now, I have been speaking with Kevin Vogel, our CTE construction trades teacher, and he is growing the program, he's actually grown the program now to where we have two full-time teachers. So, we've gone from Kevin being part-time, I think five years ago, now to having two full-time teachers in a growing industry. So, at one point, this district did have their CTE students build homes, and we have, we tried to partner with Monroe Public Schools, Monroe High School, builds a house every year. We tried to partner with Monroe High School last year and the year prior. COVID interrupted that partnership. We were just going to send kids over on a, on a basis, on a as-needed basis to get our students out of the, out of the workshop they have, get them inside. You know, once they get the house water sealed, they can work inside during the winter, and it's watertight. So, Kevin has, has reached out now, and we've met several times with, with myself, Jackie Lancina, and also recently, a, a local business owner had stepped forward and asked if we would be interested in working in a partnership with him, or he said that he has a lot that he could sell us at cost, and is very flexible in terms, he's a Bedford grad, he would like to, sorry, I'm trying to pull up, Joe Albring, sorry. Joe met with myself, Kevin, Jackie Lancina, and Kevin Weber in regards to a lot that he currently owns that's buildable. It has, it has the necessary utilities at the road, and the, and he's very flexible, again, whether he partners with the build, whether we go 50-50, his development group and the district, and/or we build on the lot potentially and pay for the lot once we sell the, sell the property itself. So, the ideal is pretty simple. The district would identify the means that we are going to get a lot, purchase, get planning, get plans, purchase the materials. Our students using, using Kevin and our second teacher to build a house in a 12-month time period, that would be done, so it'd be essentially one school year, would be one house. Once you get going, the proceeds from the previous house will pay for the lot and get started on the next one. Since we're not on that cycle right now, the district would need to pay for the materials upfront for a build, and we would, you know, essentially build a house per year. I've asked Kevin if he believes we can do this in a one-year timeframe, he does. We would roll two different groups of kids over to that area in two-hour blocks, and then he could also get work hours on the outside as well, if they, students who are in the program are continuing. So, the plans that I had in front of you was actually from Mr. Albring. It fits, it fits the lot, this is what he was planning on building before. If we went a different direction and found a different lot, or if we had one that was donated to the district, obviously even better. But at this time, this is the only person that we've found that, pretty reasonable lot. I believe the lot is, approximate value is about $20,000 with the utilities at the, at the road. So, I'm in favor of it, I think our kids are doing great work right now. They're building sheds, and they're building other smaller features. They are going to do some work here pretty soon on the demolition at the current student concession stand, and so, they'll be busy for a little while, but they really want to get, they've been, especially the years, the three and four-year students, they really want to start building. And that's, that's the way that we're going to get our students into the trade groups with experience that they can, they can talk about. I, you know, I don't want this to be a program where they just stay inside all day and build small, you know, you know, easy carry items. I want them to be able to build the houses that they're practicing. Right now, they're building, they're building stud walls, they've done, they've done different pitch roofs, they're, they're doing volunteer work, but this would really put them on the same tier as Monroe and some of the programs that have been going strong for the last couple decades. Thoughts, just before that, Kevin did drop off earlier, he said he's apologizing, he cannot, he could not stay, but for the particular house that you have drawings for right now, the estimate for materials for that house would be about 179,000 in total sales. And estimated value for the home at the end of the build would be approximately 240,000. Now, I'm always in favor of building family-friendly homes for, for our community, so that if, you know, somebody wants to move in with, hopefully with some school-aged children, that would be a bonus. Can't mandate that or put that in the sale price, but I think that's a point, I think that's a point price here in the community would be very well receptive. If you try to sell a house recently, even with, even with high interest rates, it's still, it's still definitely a easier sell than it is to find a house. So, I think right now, even if the market crashes, this is a, this is not a $600,000 house. It's not too small, it's not too large, it's appropriate for a, for a family of four to live in and maneuver in. So, I'm in favor of it. I, I did speak with Julie, and Julie can address the, the funds for it. Because the, you know, the fiscal year is different than the school year, it would essentially be paying for it out of fiscal year, let's say 22, 23, and then you'd recoup the money in '24. You know, it's just, that would be the cycle we'd work on. We'd sell that, we'd build the house, sell the house, use the proceeds for, you know, the, the next startup seed money.
Okay, questions from the board?
Did he say where the lot was?
Of course he did. Do I remember? No. It is, I don't, I'll have to, he did mention across from School Road, does that help? Pink Road. No, School, School Road, at School.
Across from School.
On School Road or across from School?
All right, you caught me, I don't know. I will get back with you, but...
They have utilities up there?
Yes.
Yes?
I know, but they don't have any built-in.
I have a question, so the, the total cost is 200,000?
The, it would be a hundred...
We'd have to put out? Yeah, 20 for the lot and 189.
180, I don't know if that, did that include, sorry, I was doing the, the committee meeting.
Well, thanks, already said building materials and 79, and 20 for the lot, 200,000.
Or this is just material?
What's the estimated sale of it?
240, I'm sorry, Dee, I'm just trying to find out whether or not the materials, the cost includes the price of the lot. I'll have to find the answer for you, Dee.
So, regardless, so even if, even if it is the 20,000, is there not in the 180? So, what do we do with the proceeds?
It would be the start, the startup money for the next build.
So, I mean, if the neck, oh, the startup money.
Startup money, it's not going to cover the cost of the next build.
Got it.
But, when you do this three or four times, it's kind of like flipping a house, right? After a while, you can become a cash, cash buyer. This is not going to be started up in, you know, the two, two cycles. It'll, I imagine after, after five to 10 years, they'll have, you know, the program will then recover enough funds from the sale of their previous homes to be able to do it on, on their own.
Well, I think it's good for the kids, but initially, we have to put out 180 to start out.
That's right. Yeah, and that's without any donations from, Kevin's also a builder, and we know that when our schools go out for the, to the community, and they're doing projects, i.e. community stadium, baseball stadium, he's very likely to get builder friends and vendors to assist with donations in kind or other that would go into the program. But, worst-case scenario, that is, that's, that's correct.
And we aren't going into a time where these houses aren't going to sell. You're talking a year to have this built, correct?
It is, the real estate, the real estate market is going to continue to shift, whether, you know, whether interest rates make it so that it's harder to sell or not. I mean, so far, I think the market's still so tight, and it depends on the area. In Bedford's homes, if you look at the current state, state of our Bedford, we're building a lot of detached villas for, they're not deemed retirement communities, but they are retirement communities, including my in-laws. So, 55 and older, many, many of those communities have gone up, and a lot of really big homes, not a lot of starter homes being built in Bedford Township right now.
Yeah.
You know, I consider, you know, I know, I know. These are all things that I've asked and wondered.
But, I'm looking at where we spent all the bond money, it's gone. We sold three of our assets, large assets, that money's gone. There is no more COVID money, so we don't get to buy buses and finagle technical support and all this other stuff. I think, and we all know what it's like to go to a grocery store now. The inflation isn't going down anywhere, and it, it's just touchy. I, I'd like to take 10 steps back. We put $400,000 away a year to maintain five buildings. That doesn't change too many light switches. We sit good now, but one catastrophe. Look at what, where we were at before we got COVID relief. We were going to end up with what, 325,000 to run the place? I, I, I think it's wonderful for the kids, I'm just very leery the way we're spending money like crazy. Now, if they would come to us and say, yeah, this builder is going to, this guy's going to give us X amount in lumber, like the baseball team, like we did for the football stadium, that's all fundraising. And then I, I see that we're pricing out seats in the auditorium. Well, are the performing arts, have they come to the table with anything? Have they gone out and tried to fundraise at all?
I, I, I'll remind you.
I, I'm real leery, because we're, it's all easy to spend this money now, but we hit one catastrophe, we're, we're in the sink. And I, I just, I don't want to be where we used to be, where we couldn't even have money to buy pencils.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just remind the board, we did ask Carl to go through and do an entire cost evaluation on the remaining projects, so the opportunity to fundraise would be there. If someone came to us, we would have that available. So, that's the effort that he is working on, not necessarily to bring it to the board to vote.
Okay. I, I just, I, I just noticed that we were pricing out seats, and I, don't email me, I like the performing arts, I'm not against them, trust me, I'm not against them at all. I'm just saying, the softball team came, they went out on their own and got fundraising. Where are these performing arts people? I mean, they should be out fundraising now, or it's, Amy, maybe you can add to that. That's one of your pet projects, the, this auditorium, correct? And didn't you say a lot of your backers were for that? I mean, have they formed a group?
Well, to say that, to say that my backers, it's not like I was out there campaigning on, I'm going to fix the auditorium if I get elected. I think that there is a definite need to improve the auditorium.
Well, everybody does, there was, there's a need to improve everything.
And so, when we met with Carl for his annual review, yes, I was one of the ones who spoke up and said...
I was there.
I would like to know what it would cost to improve the auditorium, and to make that, which is also a place where we invite the community to come in to our space, just like we do the field, just like we do our cafeteria. This is a place we want to be proud of, and when seats are falling apart and things like that, it's tough to be proud of that. And I think that we need to find out what it would cost to, to do it. And so, no, I'm not out there rallying a group of people to fundraise for it. I'm not of the mind that we should be selling candy bars to...
I didn't say candy bars.
To fundraise, so.
That was somebody else that did that 25 years ago.
I think that what we need to do is find out what it would cost, and then see what the community's appetite is to help support renovations. And if the community doesn't have an appetite for it, then we determine it, where it falls on the priority list in terms of our resources, and when we might be able to, to make improvements, and what those improvements would be.
I'm just saying, you know, the softball team came to us, and they had already gone out to the community and gotten 85% of the money. I'm just, I didn't know if the performing arts people, the, the parents had gotten together and thought of fundraising, sell the seats, and put their little names on them or something, I'll buy a seat.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't got to that. Again, I wanted to avoid community doing their own subjective fundraising when we didn't have a focus and cost associated with it. So, I think once we know that, then we can put it out there.
Okay, so we're looking at that, and we're looking at 180,000 for a house. I'm just saying, we put $400,000 away, and that's to maintain all these buildings, and if we have one catastrophe, we're done.
So, just, just so, I mean, I guess everyone understands, at the end of this build, the, the district gets all of its money back. So, we're talking about a one-year investment.
If it sells.
Right.
If it sells at the cost that you say it's going to sell.
Right, but even if you took it down to the cost of the materials at 180,000...
If we can sell the heaven building, probably sell the house, I think.
Okay, but yes, your point is taken, that we have risk associated. We're not asking for a vote on this today, it's just...
No, at least, well, I'm sorry. I see where Dee's coming from. My, to bring it back to the focus of this house issue, rather than some of the other remodels that we're talking about. I, my concern is the fiscal years not quite lining up, which can be fixed, but it is a hurdle. And also, to be careful not to become investors, because you're building to re, to sell. And I, for one, was a house flipper, and market crashed, I died. You know, I became then a landlord, and things change. I, I don't think as we stick to a year at a time, it's as risky, but it is kind of a territory we need to tread mightily going into. You know, as Dee said, I think it's a great, real-life experience for the kids, there's no doubt about that. I do like the idea that, really, one at a time, you're going to break even, minimally, you're going to break even. But to project then into the next year, now we're looking like investors a little bit. I do like the idea of trying to go out and get builders, contractors, to help with some of that, so that we're not taking on 100% of the material cost. That's your big issue right there. And if we could get a contractor to kind of help oversee and work with the teachers, it might be a win-win situation for both.
Both of our teachers are, are professional contractors.
Well, no, I know, but I mean, ones that are, somebody who can give us the material, you know.
Working in that way, yes, I understand.
That way, yes, yes, we're looking for freedoms here, you know, somebody that can benefit from our kid labor, and we can benefit from their material labor. Yeah, so, that's, that's, you know.
No, thank you, appreciate that, Arlene. Any additional comments from the board?
I just have one, and it's sort of along the same lines of what you were saying, was that I would not want us to get into a position of purchasing lot number two until house number one is sold.
Or sold.
Sold, that's what I said. Yeah, no, no, I wouldn't purchase the lot for the, so even if we're, if we build one this year, and then we can't build one next year, but then the following year, we can build one, because we sold it in between, like, not that it's a guarantee of we're going to build a house a year, because then we do run the risk of having inventory, which we don't want.
Okay, good discussion. All right, thanks, Carl, thanks to the board. We'll go ahead and move on to our instructional items, Mark.
Thank you. We have our resolutions, that always happen at this time of year. Just to summarize those for you, we have bullying prevention month, united way month, and then some weeks embedded into the month. National School Lunch Week is October 10th through the 14th. Fire Prevention Week is also the 10th through the 14th. Character Counts Week is the 17th through the 21st, as well as School Bus Safety Week. So, lots of things going on in the district to support those, and just to give you a taste of those, and I'll also include these in my, in my weekly update. For bullying prevention month, an example at one of the elementary schools, some, some lessons going on about bullying prevention, as well as an activity kit that was shared with the teachers from the National Bullying Prevention Center. A building is having October 19th where and... A building is having October 19th Wear and Share Orange to show unity for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and to send a visible message that no child should ever experience bullying. United Way Month, every building is having staff participate. That's always a big month in Bedford, and they find ways to have fun as a staff and participate and raise some money. And National School Lunch Week, one example, Mrs. Ferris, our new food service director, October 13th is National Apple Crunch Day. And she's putting apples on the menu, and we love to see everyone crunch into an apple that day and take pictures. And she's gonna make sure there's some activities pages for the students during the week. Fire Prevention Week, all of our elementaries are having a presentation from the Bedford Fire Department. And every building is having a fire drill during that time as well. Character Counts Week, I think especially meaningful this year because of the continuous improvement planning we did and incorporating of our universal values of integrity. So, that really highlighted the pillars of character and character counts, respect, responsibility, citizenship, trustworthiness, fairness, and caring. And the buildings, again, highlighting that in many ways, not just during that week, but throughout the year. And it will be an ongoing emphasis because of the continuous improvement planning and their inclusion in that. One example, at Douglas Road, Mrs. Johnson's going to read aloud, read about how to be respectful on the announcements. And teachers will choose a student that's showing respect each week. And Mrs. Welch, their exploratory teacher, is incorporating character traits into lessons. And for Bus Safety Week, bus evacuation drill is happening. And at Monroe Road, their PTO is working on a bus driver appreciation breakfast. So, lots of good things going on related to the resolutions.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Discussion from the board. I have one comment around the Fire Prevention Week. I'm not sure if we have anywhere in our, I guess, sheet of opportunity for them to do is connecting with the American Red Cross on their Sound the Alarm program. That's an ongoing program that the Red Cross has. And recently, the Red Cross received a national grant for sight and hearing impaired members of the public to receive smoke alarm signals to be installed for. One of the things they have is they have an alarm that will vibrate the bed so that, you know, you can alert if you're sleeping and, you know, other light and noise vibration signals. So, it's a relatively new grant that they have there. So, again, just some awareness for our community that those are available during that week may be another opportunity.
Is that something principals would apply for, or we would apply for as a district, or?
It's, so the grant is already, the grant is secured through the, through the American Red Cross. We would just connect our community members with the Red Cross for those services that they would need. So whether it was a smoke detector during the month of September, they do a lot of work around Sound the Alarm, where they install so many smoke alarms in different homes. But they are available free of charge through that grant. So, it would be just the awareness that they could present, and then the opportunity to connect that member in need with the person at the Red Cross to get that support.
So, it'd be a good connection point for principals to put it out there and-
Yep, absolutely.
Get connections, okay.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I'm not sure if the community is aware that that is something that they would qualify for free of charge. And they have someone come out and install the hearing and sight impaired alarms so that they're done properly.
What a great thing, yeah, thank you for mentioning it.
Other discussion items on the resolutions? Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on to personnel items, Howard, it doesn't end, right?
Well, actually, I was hoping to hear something a little bit better, like, geez, your list is a lot shorter this year.
I know, yeah. I mean, we're, we're-
We're down to just a couple here, so, yes, thanks. But I know what you meant by that. Yeah, it is, it is always ongoing in some fashion. But anyways, for the college agenda tonight, we have a couple new hires. Eric Sikurski, you might recognize that name. He recently retired and is gonna be coming back as well. And then we have this Glover, and that's, let's see, yeah, checking on this. Tracy Glover was hired to take a, or take a vacancy due to a resignation. We had a couple of those at the last minute, if you recall. So, those are two new hires, and that again is Tracy Glover and Eric Sikurski. And then consideration to accept a retirement, and that's Laura Taylor at the senior high school. And she provided our, she completed our duties just at the end of this, actually, she's gonna be, completing them at the end of next month. And so, we tried to accommodate, and we put her in a certain type of assignment that it wouldn't be disruptive knowing that she was leaving at this time of year. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Howard. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda for our Board of Education meeting on October 6th. Again, all of the usual items that we covered here today in terms of the superintendent report, our assistant superintendent report, and our, and our human resources report. I was just looking, we don't have any recognition stuff, or student recognition? Do we have anything in the works?
We have, we have a few that are in the pipeline. I'm not sure if they'll be next month or in November. I work with Sandy on getting that. I know that we will have our student liaison back next, at the next meeting. That was something the board had asked for previously. So, that will take place, I think we're all set with that. And we'll work on getting, if we have any recognitions. Usually, the first, the first part of the year is, you know, we usually recognize either athletes or performing arts at the end of, at the end of the first, you know, quarter or season. But we always have, we always have individuals to recognize, so we'll find out.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to policy items, and we'll have the approval for the first reading of policies A through B. And, yeah, just public commentary. Any questions around the agenda for October 6th?
Lisa?
Yes.
I don't know if this needs to be on the agenda or not, but I'm going to the leadership conference and have to vote as a representative of the board on the many, 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 many resolutions. There are only two things being proposed that are new resolutions and a couple of bylaw amendments. So, I don't know if, like, for me to get board input, if that needs to be done in public, or if I can just say, "Hey, you have any input, leave it to me."
No, I'm sorry, Lisa, may I? As a designated board, you are empowered to-
To just decide.
Just decide. And we would ask that-
That's hot, that's a lot of weight.
Lot of weight. Then you see these guys smiling as they appointed you. I always smile when someone's appointed, but. So, when you get back, if you just collect, you know, just collect information on the key points, and then, you know, in the past, anyone who attended just gave a quick summary, you know, of the things that they thought interesting or didn't like, liked?
I'm going to 10 classes, you know, over four days, so I'll have something to say when I come back.
Perfect.
We also have on a planned presentation by the collaborative regarding the stadium design drawings. The goal is to go out for a bid in December. So, we have been honing in on some final drawings, design work. They have some updated pricing based on inflation, short work shortage, material shortages. So, there is a, there's a couple different options that they'll present to the board, a base package as well as some potential add-ons. So, they'll present that at the next meeting as well.
All right, thank you, sorry I missed that.
And in president, just wanted to note that we had also prepared a short presentation on the strategic planning or continuous improvement planning, just to highlight the process and the goals and the specific measures and activities under those.
We presented them at the committee of the whole, I did the last time, but this will be the, just a full presentation with the vote at the end to prove it, five-year cycle.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that acknowledgement, I skipped over that, too. Okay, any other items on the agenda for next Monday, or Thursday? Okay, all right, we're gonna move on to our standing items, the check register, our financial update. Any board comments or discussion on either of those? Seeing none, we'll move on to our second public commentary.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. And again, I'll just remind for those who may be new to public commentary, we do time three minutes, is that what we're doing? Two minutes? Two minutes, sorry, two minutes, and you'll hear a bell go off. So, when you hear it go off, if you aren't completed, just take about 10 seconds to wrap it up.
Okay, good.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, okay. What about working with Habitat for Humanity? I know that they let children, let high school children work with them also. And we wouldn't have to buy property, we wouldn't have to buy materials, we wouldn't have to do that stuff, and our kids would still get on-the-job experience. I don't know if that's a possibility, but something to look at, maybe, so, options. Also, I had an email with the principal and vice principal at the middle school, and I had an in-person meeting where I was told in the in-person meeting that schools supersede parents. According to every state education law and code that I've read in the 338 pages, they do not. So, I sent an email back requesting, you know, "Could you please list the school code in which you say that you supersede me as a parent?" And I have yet to receive a response, that was on September 16th. So, we're talking, you know, 13 days. I have yet to see, and I've been in the school, I volunteered, I've talked to all of them, but nobody has responded to my email. So, you know, that's concerning to me as a parent. She did say the term I referenced was in loco parentis. I'm sorry, that does not mean you supersede me, still, I am mom. So, I don't know, if you have a code or something that you could send me to? I read the handbook, I also read all of your board's bylaws and policies. So, please, if you have information I'm not aware of, please send it to me. But according to Michigan State law and education code, there are actually 15 references where the parent supersedes school. So, I have yet to find one where the school supersedes parents. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Hi, my name is Nick Delaney, I live on Fox Run Court, Temperance, Michigan. I'm here in regards to an incident that happened at the JRE crosswalk. I believe it was either last week or the week before. We were pretty close to one of those catastrophes Ms. Janney was mentioning. I believe some members of the board have likely seen the video of the incident, where a truck just simply did not notice the crosswalk lady with her sign and very nearly killed the child at the crosswalk. He slammed on his brakes and wound up in the grass where the sidewalk would be, that's proposed in front of JRE. I'm here to ask that you consider purchasing some type of flashing light system that the crosswalk monitor could activate in order to just make it more visible. It was my understanding the driver that day simply did not notice the crosswalk lady. And in my experience, it's not extremely visible there. I walk my two daughters to school four or five days a week there myself. My wife has priced out these systems. It seems we could probably get the materials for $3,000 to $5,000, and then it would just be a matter of installing them. I think that would be a small price to pay for the additional safety and to prevent what could be a financial catastrophe for our school system if an accident like that were to happen out in front of one of our schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Servany. I'm going to be piggybacking off Mr. Delaney's. My family was the one involved in that incident on September 7th, where we began crossing the crosswalk. I go first, my son always drives his little power wheels to go pick up his sister. And Linda comes out with her stop sign, and I look up, and this car's not slowing down, and it's coming fast. I yell as loud as I can, he locks his brakes up and actually goes into the crosswalk. My wife had to grab his little power wheels and pull him back, or he would have been run over. He was going every bit of 45 miles an hour before I yelled stop. That crosswalk is white and barely visible. I mean, our school speed limit signs are like 600 feet away, southbound on Jackman. Every single day, at least one car gets yelled at for speeding through there. They could just keep going at 45 miles an hour. Now, I know a lot of that has to do with road commission and all of that stuff, and putting up signs or crosswalks. But it feels like it's gonna have to come to the point of somebody getting killed or seriously hurt for something to happen. Just like, they, somebody get killed at, what was it, Telegraph and Sterns, which there's a bar there and a highway and absolutely nothing else, and now that has crosswalks there. But we can't get them across from a street where we have at least 12 known walkers every morning going to and from across that street. I would just say more signage or something better. Mrs. Farnin pulled up a whole bunch of different things as far as cones to slow it down to one, one lane travel, so you could see it slows down quite well. I think a big thing of hers was storage and having them brought out and in. And I know there's tons of families right there with three houses in that we would be glad to go out and put them out every day to and from school. My wife's a stay-at-home mom, and she said she would even throw on, like, a vest to go out herself to help with it. So, anything that could be considered, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Nicholas. While Ed is signing in, I just wanted to mention, I know that you may have not watched the board meetings, or know that during public commentary, the board doesn't respond in the administration, so we'll follow up independently. You're welcome.
Yeah, my name is Ed Bancowski, and some of you know me pretty well. For those that don't, I was in the first graduating class in our newly renovated high school. Co-chaired the 50th anniversary of that, in fact. And I was also in the first class of teachers. I'd opened the junior high school 50 years ago, and I'll throw in another 50. I was a founder with Bill Renee and Tom Swan of the Great Lakes Wrestling Club, which still exists, all those are over 50 years ago. So, my background here is, is long, and I like to think it's pretty good. I'm here because in 1971, when we had our first undefeated team at the junior high school, I decided it'd be a neat idea to put pictures of the undefeated teams up on the walls in the gym. And in 1971, I drove up to pick up the first picture. You'll like this, Lisa. The address is 1099, like a 1099 for him, 1099 Chicago Road, Troy, Michigan. I Googled that today, it's like 140-mile round trip to get, to pick up the first picture. I installed it myself. 45 years later, there were 70 pictures up there, you know, and they cost between $50 and $100 apiece, and it was a lot of work putting them up. In 1996, I was putting the wrestling one up, I wanted to put it up. And I had just had major back surgery, had a back brace on and everything. And I got the ladder up, I brought it from home, industrial glade ladder, and it actually slid out on the glossy gym floor from under me. And I rode it all the way to the floor, I dropped my drill and got my hands off and squatted down so I wouldn't hurt my back worse. And I turned around, there was a sixth-grade girl, Adrian Salisbury. I said, "Adrian, don't tell Mrs. B, I just did that." So, but anyways, six years ago, all those pictures came down, and I was informed of it. Mike Hennessy was a teacher at the junior high, and I hope I don't get cut off at two minutes on this. I'll go as fast as I can. But Mike and a couple other teachers in- But Mike and a couple other teachers informed me they were coming down. And I spent two scorching hot days outside with my camera, standing on my tailgate. Piece of nice carpet. We laid each picture down, took a picture of each picture. Mike Hennessy then took them through Adobe Photoshop and fixed them all. All the pictures are great. And I've been working hard. I've talked to a lot of people to try and get them installed in the showcase down at the boys' end of the gym with, like Mark Garment has at the high school, with three monitors and a driver, drivers, whatever it takes. There's power already in the showcase. And I've gotten, the reasoning has been, well, we don't have the money right now. Well, at that time, the yearbook had money. They were going to donate the money. Bob Masters had a lot of money in his fund he would have donated. But it didn't look good for the community at that time. We don't have the money. And then COVID came. And then, well, maybe when we get the, a Millage passed. And it passed. Well, maybe then when we renovate the junior high. Well, it's been renovated. And I've talked to, I don't want to name any names. I don't want to point my finger or throw anybody under the bus. But I've talked to a lot of people about this and I just am getting a runaround. And I don't want to die before these things go in the showcase. I mean, I work too hard. There's a, those things are, they're motivational for kids, they're inspirational. I figured 80 pictures, there's at least 1,200 kids and teachers and coaches in those pictures. Many of who are taxpayers, many of them have kids in school now. Some of them have grandkids, some have great-grandkids in those pictures. And they enjoyed coming back to all the special events, the athletic events, Bronco Roundup, excuse me, it's probably Mule Roundup now, right? I haven't been in the building to know if they call it that yet. Parent-teacher conferences. People were always looking at those. And I'm just wondering, you know, what can I do? What can we do? It shouldn't, there shouldn't be anything selling candy bars or anything for this. I've been told, I will tell you, I've talked to Jay Daisley. I think the stuff's there to do this. The power's in there. Why can't? I think it's a work order. I'll do it. What's it going to take to get it done? Darren, thanks for not ringing the bell on me too soon. That was my short version too, by the way.
Thanks, Ed.
Hey, guys, Jeff Lunti. You guys obviously all know me. You know, first, we went to the township meeting. Was that last week? And Sheriff's Department gave a little update and they touched on the school bus cameras. And at the time, I guess there was a glitch in the software with the playback. And you guys were not, it was recording, but we weren't able to retrieve it. So hopefully, possibly able to get some update on that and see if that has progressed where we can start, you know, catching some of these incidents. And obviously, that incident wouldn't have helped your situation. But it's certainly, you know, fresh in everybody's mind that it's the start of school and, you know, things are going on, accidents are happening. And luckily, there hasn't been any tragedy, but it sounds like it was close. And I guess after hearing them, I don't know if there's any update. I know it was discussed last year of improving the school bus signals with the LEDs, like what they put in downtown Lambertville. I don't know if there's been any further progression on that or discussion. So any update on that would be appreciated. And lastly, before my wife and I moved back to the Bedford area, we lived in Wyoming in an area that had a very successful CTE building program. It was actually a partnership between their community college, the school district, and they also worked with Habitat for Humanity for a while. The LCCC, which was the community college, they actually ran theirs up well enough to a point that after a number of years, they ended up funding and selling a multimillion-dollar house. I mean, it was probably a 6,000 square foot house up on the bluff above town that they built and sold. So it definitely, and that was, that was not in the greatest of financial times in the area we were at either. You know, it was, I don't want to say it was a full-blown recession there, but, you know, it was not exactly the time for a multimillion-dollar house. But they made it work and they made it successful. So I think, you know, in this time, even with financial uncertainty, if you can build anything, especially a new starter home in the $200,000 to $250,000 range, for a new house, that's a no-brainer. I do not believe you would have any problem selling that whatsoever. And as far as giving community support from builders and suppliers, I mean, I know I can't speak exactly for my company, but, you know, I can tell you if you walked in and said you were, what you were doing, and hey, I need an excavator, we're doing this with the kids. Chances are, we bring something over on a rental, you know, on a loaner and let you guys use it. And I'm sure there is 100 other businesses that would supply their materials or equipment or whatever you need to help get the program going. So I would definitely pursue that much farther. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any additional public commentary?
Should be a pretty quick meeting tonight, so. I could address, actually, I think all the questions or thoughts that were expressed. They're all things that we've been working on in terms of district. Partnership with Habitat for Humanity is great. And we, I actually have experience with that, not only as a volunteer myself, but also in a former district. The problem with, the problem with it is their schedule and their ability to keep the classes busy. So when you're, when you're doing curriculum, you have to make sure that you have a plan every day, every week, right? And Habitat, because it's a lot of, it's volunteer work, a lot of big companies come in and they're never on schedule. And so it's always, I mean, so our kids could go there and lend a hand, but what you typically get is a lot of people standing around, especially once the initial build starts. And, you know, when you're framing, everybody can be doing something, either carrying or hammering or, you know, doing whatever. It's when you get to the more finite skills, the specific skills, a lot of standing around. And Habitat's that control that from start to finish. So it's a great resource, for sure. And sometimes they call on us, and our kids have gone and done that already. But they'll call and say, hey, we need a crew to do, you know, framing. We need a crew to do roofing or whatnot. And we'll send, we'll send some of the seniors or juniors over there. So it's tough. It's a great partnership for piecemeal, but it's not the same as building start to finish. So that's, you know, that's the one piece. Mark French will check on the other question you had regarding the administration and getting, I'm getting back to you on your communication. The incident at JRE, I've seen the video, I've seen the images. I've met with Sherry, I've talked to Sherry Farnin. We are looking to address that. I can't, I can't tell you with certainty that we can stop it, but strengthen it. And whether it's painting, whether it's cones, whether it's in combination with potentially some of the other items we've already addressed. One of the things that we've been talking about as a board and as an administration is replicating what the township has done in the business district with the radar signs. Whether you believe it or not, the data shows that those signs slow people down. Not everyone. Some people think it's a game. But the data shows that from the first day they put them in to now, it has consistently dropped month after month. We have pricing. The pricing we were able to get is different than the pricing the township gets because they're not looking for school zone blinking lights as well. They're just looking for the radar signs. I could do the radar signs in front of all of our schools for about $24,000. The signs with the blinking lights that would indicate school zone and that would drop the, automatically drop the, the speed control down to what we have during school hours. Those are about, I think, 43, I believe is what I presented a few months, or a couple months ago. I actually had a conversation with the township today. I am going to be writing to them. And they have a committee that they formed to propose, to come up with proposals for their ARPA funds. So I'm going to ask if they will partner once again with those, with those things. We have spent a lot of money recently. We're going to spend more with, with the outlay of the stadium funds and those things, which we will get back over the course of 10 years. But some things you just have to spend money on. And we'll, I'll have a presentation on that. You know, they'll be closer. And the other pieces, we just lost another sign last Saturday. A police chase across the border came in and the individual wrecked the vehicle and knocked out one of the signs at DRA. So now it was, I get a call early in the morning on Sunday, before 6:00 AM, that one of our signs was down and there's a, there was an accident, you know, just off our property. So we have to replace that one, which we are responsible for. So it's already going to be a cost. So, and I got a new updated contract from the road commission to update our working agreement. This kind of precipitated that, them sending me a new contract, where they currently service our signs at about $300 per building, per time we have them come out. So it, there's an expense there. So we are going to come circle back to that. I know before I said that we needed a partnership to do that. I think the township, I think I can make a strong case that whether it's split the cost or do something, it's not, these are not just school kids. These are Bedford kids. And the township, I believe, has an investment. They've partnered with us in the past and it looks like they potentially could do it again with the sidewalks. So I want to address that. I watched the video over and over and over and it was tough. You go ahead. Yeah.
Would there be a possibility that maybe we can share, do a little overtime and run radar just in that area?
Yeah, so, go ahead.
I originally went to Shoreland as a kid. Everybody knows, you don't speak through Shoreland because you're going to get a ticket. And if you have that starting to get enforced, you know, you're going to have to take it today and we'll pay for two hours.
So the community couldn't hear your question, but I'll repeat it. So the question was about having a deputy or sheriff deputy set up a patrol right there and do that. We've done that with bus arms before, when we knew there was a hotspot where we had usually the same individual going around buses. They've set up, they've set up shop and we're looking for particular cases. I'd have to check with their, their start times. I'm not sure if they're on 12-hour shifts right now or they're on eight hours. I think they're on 12-hour shifts, if I'm not mistaken. So unfortunately, it's right around the start time. I know last year, after the Oxford tragedy, Troy Sheriff, good enough, kept everybody over and had people starting earlier to be able to be in our schools at the start of the day. I've never met a sheriff that was more interested in keeping kids and staff members safe. So I will talk to, I'll talk to that group. We also, I know that, I have had Randy Crepp, our elementary level person, over there several times. I know fortunately, it's, I share, our elementary share, share our one liaison.
Seems like every day he pulls up there, he ends up right.
Yeah, and again, you know, I'm not, I don't want this to be a, you know, it's like, it's like the cameras. I don't want to have, this is not an I gotcha, we're trying to raise money here. But if we know there's an issue, I think that they are more than willing to do something. So whether it's I just set Randy up over there or have them split with Jeremy Lustock. I mean, our first priority is always stated as school safety. And whether it's coming to or leaving the building, we will, we will continue to work on this and get it, and get a better system. It doesn't mean that it's going to stop it because people just don't pay attention. I see it daily. I'm not going to say I've never, I'm not guilty of it sometimes where I look up, I have to slam on the brakes. But people just aren't paying attention. And they have to understand in school zones specifically, kids and families are walking, whether it's on the side of the road or it's across the street. So I appreciate your coming tonight and talking about it so that the community's understanding that there's a major issue.
Also, I'm wondering the same thing with the sidewalks and that sidewalk proposal. Would there be any way to write in to have a crosswalk?
That sidewalk proposal would do nothing but increase the traffic going across that road. Maybe it'd be more enforcement.
I would be, yeah, I would be glad to, the proposal they have is to put a new crosswalk at the areas that they're building. I mean, they're not my funds, but I'd love to see it. But I can, I can obviously ask the township committee. The idea is that the committee is going to take the proposals to their full board and then they'll discuss it and hash it out. But I know all the individuals on that board, I think that they have the same, the same desire to keep our kids safe as well. So I'll ask that question. That's a great idea, to find out if there's a chance to put a full crossing there with lights and paint. So we all know that a lady with a sign or a gentleman with a sign, no matter how big or, you know, no matter how tall they are, if you're not paying attention, you're going to run right through that as well, right? So, yep, we will, so we will definitely keep addressing that. In the meantime, I'll talk to the sheriff and I'll see if we can do something. Because those are not overnight fixes, but, you know, if we get the ball rolling on something like that. Finally, so the update on radar, radar signs, stop arm cameras. They were working all along. They just, we couldn't extract the data from it. We have since done that. We've sent over, I think we sent over 12 yesterday. And two, and two are actually in the hands of the, either have been written already or are being handed to the prosecutor. So it's, there are, there are, there have already been dozens already this year. And we're only in the first month of school. So, and this is with us having a media blast of, hey, don't do what, you're going to get ticketed. And the prosecutor and the sheriff teaming up to write a letter specifically for Bedford, stating that they are going to prosecute to the fullest extent. So. Yeah. And so this is, I mean, it's going to continue happening. People just aren't paying attention. The biggest piece is now that we have them, just getting the system down to who's going to write the ticket and, or who's going to be doing the calls. What I don't want to happen unfortunately is our liaison's having to go deliver these tickets because it's taken away from our buildings. So we're just trying to figure out the system. But the sheriff department, sheriff's office is, is resolute in their, their decision to forward this through. So they want to see it end as well. So that is, that's working well. But we didn't lose anyone. We just couldn't extract it for the first week or so. And then the last part, Mr. Bancowski, you and I fight this conversation. The biggest drawback so far is we don't like the system we have at the high school either. The, you know, the running screens. We don't like that system either. We're trying to do something more aesthetically pleasing and more professional in appearance. So that, the first review of that, if you walk out the door today and you look to the left or right, you see some boards, professionally done design boards that have images of former and current board members, former superintendents. We'd like to do something more like that for all those images. And so we didn't jump on it at the junior high because we didn't really like it the way it looks at the high school either. I mean, we have that now at the high school and we also have the, I think the All-American plaques that are all different colored frames, all different shade. I think we can do better. And I think we're getting, we have the team in place now with our branding and what we have. So there was a process to all that, but we will, we will continue to work on that. And I'm sure, Ed, it'll be before, while you're still alive, I promise.
And I'm willing to work on it in the near future to make sure it happens. Eventually, I'm now the president of the National Wrestling Hall of Fame, the Michigan chapter. We have an induction. I come home, I have a Ford V2 ducking. There's going to be somebody from Bedford probably going into that this year. I can't reveal that it hasn't been approved nationally yet, but it hasn't been by our chapter. And I put their bio in. I can do it from my laptop at home. And it's in still under right now. And I don't think this is what we need because it's one person at a time or one team at a time. You type in Bill Renee, and there's his picture, and there's his bio. I don't think that would work either. So I don't know if this is really going to work.
Yeah, I don't, the digital, scrolling digital piece, there's always, it's always seems to be an issue with it. It needs to be reset every time the power goes out. Take a look at, when you walk out today, see the boards out there. I think they're very professionally done. We have a partner that gives us a good price. We use them for a lot of our graphics and logos. I think personally, that's the way to go. And I know Mark Garment, our athletic directors, and big fan, our coaches like it. Once you get it up, you can update it quickly. It's just a matter of sending them to digital format. And we actually can put them up ourselves. So it's just a matter of getting the format done. And I believe we're at that spot now where the template's complete. Now we just, now that we've painted the high school and the junior high, I think it's, you know, we're moving along nicely.
Can I mention two more things in the same area? One of them is, and I brought this to Griffin's attention. The junior high marquee, it's not wired to 220 like all the rest of, you can hardly see it, it's too dark. And then from what I understand, it's running on 110 instead of 220. And then the other issue is, is the high school Hall of Fame plaques. And Lisa McKenna and I were involved in a lot of that. This is when I decided to step down from that thing was because when Dustin Crest, before he left, they decided they weren't going to get plaques anymore for the hall because they were running out of room. Well, and now I'm sure they've taken them all down from what I understand. Where are those plaques? Is that history going to be gone too? I mean, because you could never get all that back. I mean, and Great Lakes just has some of it, but then they didn't. For the last two classes, I think, they went in, there was no extra plaque at all.
Anything that was taken down during renovations have not been discarded. Everything has been, including the stained glass window that was at the high school, not far from that location. So again, we're trying to create a brand where we have consistency throughout the district and a consistent look. So, you know, those things will be going up, back up in time.
The marquee.
The marquee. The issue with the marquee is not the 110, 220, Tom. I believe it is that it's running from the same power from the high school. It's, it's. It's, it's, we've been talking and working on a, on a fix for this.
The power at the junior high for the sign is run from the high school. Right now, that's going to be changed over to the junior high. It has been turned up recently, but if you turn it up too high, it blows a fuse. So it's as high as it can get right now. And I think it's a lot brighter than it has. Drive by it again tonight. Drive by it again tonight. It has been turned up.
I saw, I thought it was a little better, but it's still not the same as the other four or five.
Well, at seven o'clock or near dusk, it's turned down to like fifty percent. So we have to meet township rules to not have it be so bright for the neighbors. So, yeah, that's already been addressed, or is it going to be addressed to get it even brighter?
It'll look just like the other, it'll be at the same setting that the other lights. We just, we have to run a separate line, a separate power line to it.
See, I'm looking out for my school.
I, I got that, yes.
That's my building.
Thank you. We don't normally, as, as President, Madam President said, we don't normally go through and, and, and do the, be able to answer. But these were, these happen to be all things that I had ready knowledge for because they're things that we're already working on and are in the pipeline.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Maybe the rerunning of the power could be around or through that frontier box.
I didn't sign these much to begin with.
Sorry, just.
Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to.
Madam President.
Oh, go ahead, Dean.
I just, Carl, if I can ask you one question. For the sign that came down at Douglas that has to be replaced.
The pole, yes.
The pole. And that was the, the school zone flashing sign. If we have to replace that one pole, can we replace that one with the new LED?
At a higher cost because you're not buying the volume. But it, it could be, but it would be a higher cost. I just started talking to the road commission on if they were going to put a pole back up or not. There are some other logistics that we need to look at in regards to those radar signs. Because the signs that we're looking at are so long, like the one that has the blinking lights, I think that sign itself is four feet tall because it has to have the space and has to have the verbiage on it. We need about an eighteen-foot pole to put those on because you don't want it so low that, you know, you can't see it. And you also don't want it so low that anyone can get to the electronics. So little, there's a few things, not, not insurmountable. But the option is to put one there because there is none currently. But I'll have to get a price on just the one versus the price we have, the, you know, for the group of them. And, and if the township would, if they're considering additional radar signs, which I believe they have talked about, potentially, if they went with the company that we have gotten pricing from, we went with the radar signs because it's the only company that I located that has all the features that the school district needs. The sign company that I initially presented, that Sheriff Goodenough gave us the information for, did not, they don't make a product with the blinking yellow lights that are embedded in it. So it would be like that sign with our light system on top of that. It would look like a, like a Frankenstein, essentially. Be tough to, be tough to handle. And then, and then they'd still have to come out and run it. I mean, the biggest issue for me is I have to get, and not has to get in touch with the, with the county road commission. For them to come out and change the times or to fix it anytime there's an issue with it, we can't control it at all. And we have to pay them to do that. So timing, payment, it, you know, but it, but it's a cost. And it's, it's not a cheap one.
But the new ones, we would be able to update.
Yes. Yes.
They're, they're Bluetooth. So you can, yeah, you can do it within, as long as you're within, I think, ten feet of it, you can do it from a device. In a car, pull up next to it.
Okay. I see no other on, on the public commentary items. Moving on to items for the next committee of the whole meeting, which will be October twenty-seventh. Items for that committee?
Let's get a sign update.
All right, sign update. That sounds good. I would say, yeah, and I'm sure you will do this, Carl, but sign and I think even striping for Jackman, I mean, any of the things we can do to move Jackman Road crossing, even interim steps. I was going to ask if there, I was thinking in my mind, so Doug, or Monroe Road, there's, there are, there's Montovello. And so do we have the same crossing scenarios?
It's the same scenario that each building. There's not a, there's not a push button.
Right, I know that. But do we have the walkers? Like, I'm thinking Douglas Road, you have Torrey Hill, but there's a cut through over there.
We, at Monroe Road, we don't, we have not historically, we don't always have families walking across. Last year, we didn't have a crosswalk because we had no one indicating that they wanted to walk.
Right.
This year, we had a family, right, I think they wrote the board, and we've addressed that. So we do have a crosswalk every day. I think there's, I just asked this question, three or, two or three families that are taking advantage of that. Not every day, but on specific days. But JRE is by far the busiest. Yeah, Monroe, or Douglas is not quite as busy with the neighborhood being mostly adjacent to it on the sides.
Yeah, go ahead.
When I spoke with Detective, Sheriff, he said that one had one walker. The other, we have two walkers. We have, well, just from our neighborhood. And that's not including people that don't want to let people move. So they pull up, are afraid in our neighborhood, and, you know.
Right.
So we, we have probably two drivers compared to the area.
I'm at, I'm at Jackman Road every morning, and I've seen this cross in the yard almost get plowed over multiple times. It's a huge problem at Jackman. I've seen cars, I've seen her jumping out of the way. I've seen her, oh, yeah.
Crosswalk, they tell you to beg her to resign because he thinks you're going to get.
I've seen somewhere where it's just, maybe this is what you're talking about. The handheld, their stop sign actually has LED around it. There's just a battery power, and everything activated as they hold it up.
Yeah, so, so I think for the next committee of the hall, obviously, we'll get an update on all of those options. Okay. Other items for the committee of the hall? If it's ready, I would like, if you have any of the additional proposals that, the auditorium or any of those costs associated with those additional, so I think we had the softball field, the baseball field, and the auditorium, I think.
Yeah, the, yes, so we can, the softball and the baseball fields, we will have, and they are already well on their, on their way. I think as of today, the softball program has received, I believe, fifty thousand dollars in cash donations plus a number of in-kind donations. We are working on getting pricing for the auditorium. I think our evaluation is nearly complete, but now we have to get companies to actually give us quotes.
Got it.
So we are, we are supposed to meet with a seating company. We have some rough estimates, but supposed to meet with a seating company. And just a reminder, the process for the, for the football stadium or the, the community stadium where we play soccer, lacrosse, the marching band performs, I went out, we were getting prices and solidified a plan before I went and spoke to any businesses. So same, same, same cycle here. Once, it's tough to go to a, it's, if you're asking for five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, it's a lot easier than saying, can I get three thousand dollars a month? Or can I get a check for five hundred thousand dollars? They want to see, they want to see legwork before they even consider a conversation. And so I, before we go out and really solicit and try to get either naming rights or, you know, that some kind of deal in place, we have to actually first know what we, what it is we are asking for.
Yeah, and I think that's what, if, and if it's not appropriate for the twenty-seventh, that's all I'm looking for, is just an order of magnitude on the cost, not necessarily a plan to go in.
I'll give an update of where we are.
Perfect.
And maybe half of it might be done, and we can present on that. The other half, I'll just give an update on the process and where we're at in that process.
Okay, and happy to have that in November, too. And we are already stacking October pretty heavy. Okay, seeing no other items. Okay, I will, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for tonight. It is non-debatable, so. There's no. Oh, okay, so, yeah, sorry. I don't think we do, but let's go. Yeah, thanks, Griffin, is there support? Okay, so I have Griffin and Megan. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? And the motion carries. Seven fifty-three. Thank you, appreciate everyone coming.